Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this town meeting to order. To Mr. Ronald Hilly across the country from the town of Madison and the county of Somerset, state of Maine, greetings. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Madison in said county and state qualified by law to vote in town affairs to meet at the Madison Junior High School auditorium in said town on Monday, the 11th day of June 2018, at 7:00 in the evening, then and there, and act to act upon Article 1 and Articles 3 through 36 as set out below to where, and to notify and warn said inhabitants to meet at the municipal building in said town on Tuesday, the 12th day of June 2018, at 8:00 in the forenoon, then and there, to act upon by secret ballot Article 2 as set out below. The polling hours therefore to be from 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 in the evening. Article 1, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Do I hear any nominations for moderator?
Ernie Hilton.
Are there any more nominations? Hearing none, nomination ceases. Those wishing to pass a ballot, if you so. Okay, Ernie Hilton has been elected as the moderator for said town meeting. Can you come forward, Eric?
Ernie Hilton do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of this state so long as I have a continuing citizen thereof, so help me God. I, Ernie Hilton, do swear that I will fit the discharge to the best of my abilities to duties incumbent on me as moderator of this meeting according to the Constitution and laws of the state, so help me God.
Before we proceed any further, I understand that Tim has a couple of things he wants to say, on the prior agenda.
Thank you. Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming out to town meeting tonight. I don't have much of a voice thanks to allergy season, so my comments will be brief. You should have a couple of packets that you picked up on the way in. Those will be very helpful for tonight. The first one looks like this, this town meeting 2018. That has a couple of slides in it. I didn't bother to put the slides up on the screen tonight. And it also has the warrant with each article that we'll be going over in just a few minutes. And the other packet is something that looks like this. It has a summary of a lot of ordinance changes. There are 10 ordinance changes recommended in this warrant packet tonight. That's a little higher than normal, so we took the opportunity to kind of lay the information out for you. That'll be helpful when we get to those particular articles. A couple of things I just wanted to touch base on tonight, really, the goal economically and tax-wise for the town of Madison continues to be the same. Our goal is to have a balance between raising enough money to pay for our community needs while maintaining a competitive tax rate. And all of us as taxpayers realize over the last couple of years, our tax rate has gone up. And that's not necessarily due to out-of-control spending. It really is due to a major loss evaluation dating back to 2014, when the Mills valuation Madison Paper was reduced by 130 million and the subsequent closing of Madison Paper. So just to remind you folks that five years ago, the town had a valuation of a half a billion dollars, 500 million. Currently, we have a valuation of about 350 million dollars. I'm confident that that valuation has stabilized, has leveled off. We don't anticipate any more drastic changes in valuation in the foreseeable future. There is one caveat to that. Just so you're aware, as taxpayers, the town is still involved in a court battle, per se, over a payment request that Madison Paper made for their 2016 taxes. Madison Paper would like a million dollars back from you, and we are contesting that in court. We hope to have that issue settled by August or September of this year. In those handouts in front of you, there's a summary of all the budgets. You'll see the school budget, that was passed in May, the municipal budget of approximately 2.8 million dollars for tonight that you'll be considering. And then the county budget was approved this spring, about 12.5 million dollars. All of those budgets have slight increases in them, but as far as the net result to the taxpayer, it's a very minute change. Once you add all those up, what we're actually raising from taxation is only different by about 2,000 dollars from last year. So you take the fact that we've got a stabilized valuation with no major decreases and all the budgets coming in flat, we are confident that your tax rate will not fluctuate very much, but I'm not going to make any promises. You'll know when you get your tax bill in September, but these budgets, I think, have been put together well, the valuation is stable. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that are maybe out of the ordinary tonight. Most of these town meeting warrant articles are the same year after year as the state requires. I draw your attention to Article number 15, which is where we're asking you to approve the Board of Directors for Madison Electric to change their charter to allow them to borrow the money through the issuance of revenue bonds. That would be a change to their charter. And when we get to that article, we'll discuss that more and try to answer any questions you may have. I believe Article number 19 is another request from the library trustees and the Board of Selectmen regarding property in East Madison known as Jacobs Pines. Back in the 80s, George Jacobs willed that property to the town of Madison to be used for conservation and trails and recreation. And unfortunately, the library trustees were saddled with that responsibility because of the complexity of the will. The trustees have voted and the selectmen have voted to convey that land to Somerset Woods trustees, which is actually an outfit that is actually designed to fulfill the original intent of George Jacobs' will. So that comes to you in Article 19 tonight. And then the last 10 articles are all the ordinance changes. Some are minor, some are major. That's why we created this ordinance packet, and we'll use this ordinance packet when we get to each of these ordinance changes in the last 10 articles of our warrant meeting tonight. And again, I hope that information is helpful as you make good informed decisions on these article changes. The only other thing I want to touch base on tonight is really about tomorrow. Tomorrow, as you know, is your voting day. The polls are be opened at the town office from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. You've probably heard a lot about ranked choice voting, and depending on what classification you are as a voter, you might have opportunity to use one of those on primary ballots. The other thing that I wanted to pass along to you is on the ballot tomorrow, there's two local questions. And those local questions have to do with positions in the town that are elected and whether or not US townspeople want to change those positions from elected to appointed. So there's one question on changing road commissioner from elected to appointed and town clerk from elected to appointed. Those are on the ballot as well tomorrow. So the last thing I wanted to do was just to make a couple of public recognitions for my personal thanks. One of our selectmen is not seeking to maintain that office again. I appreciate the work that Paul Forten has put in over the last six years, and I would like to thank him for his help and his efforts, and sometimes great frustration, but nonetheless, thank you, Mr. Forten, for your service. He's not here this evening, but we had a chance to see him the other day. And then we could know and have known Robert Humphrey for many years, and Bobby Serge as our code enforcement officer for 12 years, as he did for many other towns in the region. For health reasons, Bobby did resign this year, so I didn't want to at least recognize him for the great work that he did and the great sense of humor and the great approach that he took to his work. So if you don't mind, let's have a round of applause for Bobby. In that same vein, some of you have had an opportunity to meet our new code enforcement officer, Susan Hathaway, who's here tonight. She's waving at you from down front here. Susan is code enforcement over in Emden, and she and Bobby have actually been working very closely together over his last couple of years, and it was Bob's recommendation for Susan to come and take his spot in Madison. So I'll be making a recommendation to the board to appoint her officially as code enforcement starting July 1st. And last but not least, I want to thank the guy who gets up at 2:00 in the morning in the snow every winter to check the roads, as he's done for the last 17 years. Thank you, Glenn Mantle, for your example and your service as our road commissioner, and happy retirement. That's about all the voice I have left, so have an enjoyable town meeting, folks. Thank you.
I'd like to first entertain what I'm going to call Article 1A, which is the ODOT, the Maine Moderator's Manual, 6th Edition, published in 2005, as the rules, the operating rules for this meeting. Can I hear a motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hands. Downhand, all opposed. Next move. I see you have blue cards here. Okay. Article 2 is to be taken up out of orders, I understand, so we're going to move on to Article 3. To see if the town will vote to pay the directors of the Department of Electric Works $10,200 for the ensuing year, said sum to be paid from the funds of the department, recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion?
No.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $11,200 to pay its Board of Selectmen. Advisory Board recommends a yes. Do I hear a motion?
No.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $525,934.46 from property taxation to fund the general government account. Both the selectmen and advisory board recommend a yes. Of that, this administration is for $475,200. Planning Board, $5,825. Code enforcement, $26,400. Boards and committees, $19,350. Assessing services, $45,500. Elections, $3,000. For a total of $575,295, of which, approved revenue from TIF reduces that amount by $49,360.54, resulting in an amount to be raised from taxation of $525,934.46. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Yes. Yes. We're just sort of voting for over a half a million dollars and no discussion.
Well, you can have all the discussion you want.
All right. The assessing service for $45,000. Who gets that money?
Mr. Kerr.
Of that budgeted amount of $45,000, we have a contracted assessor to which we pay $30,000, surely not a marlin of assessing services.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $869,461.60 from property taxation to fund the public safety account, recommended by both the selectmen and the advisory board. Of that amount, this ambulance is $92,250. Police, $440,000. Fire, $103,230. Animal control, $10,900. Streetlights, $58,000. Hydrants, $225,000. For a total of $929,380, of which, approved revenue from TIF will account for $59,918.40, with a total to be raised from taxation of $869,461.60. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Can you say?
The amount of $869,461.60.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $218,930 from property taxation to fund the other government account, recommended by both the selectmen and advisory board. Of that amount, storm drains accounts for $45,000. Waste disposal, $204,000. Total expenses are $248,000, of which approved revenue from TIF accounts for $29,070, leaving an amount to be raised from taxation of $218,930. Do I hear a vote? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved what?
So moved, uh...
The...
$289.30.
So moved the appropriate, the amount? Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $501,873.94 from property taxation to fund the public works account, recommended by both the selectmen and advisory board, of which, public works accounts for $598,525, to be reduced by approved revenue from TIF of $96,651.6, with a total to be raised from taxation of $501,873.94. Do I hear a motion?
Some would recommend the amount.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $73,950 from property taxation to fund the recreation account, recommended by both the selectmen and advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
Move back to the amount.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Any questions, comments, concerns? Yes, ma'am.
How does it compare with last year?
Mr. Kerr.
Is about $1,000 different. It's $1,000 higher this year than last year.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $21,900 from property taxation to fund the cemetery account, recommended by both the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, recommended the amount.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $175,735 from property taxation to fund the community services account, recommended by both the selectmen and the advisory board. Of that, the libraries, $113,940. Tree warden, $3,000. US naval sea cadets corps, $950. Avnet and Snowmobile Club, $1,900. Lake Association, $5,225. American Leagues and Flags, $570. People Who Care Food Cup, $14,250. Recycling Committee, $1,500. Somerset Community TV as Channel 11, $1,000. General Assistance, $15,000. Madison Anson Senior Citizens, $4,500. Somerset Humane Society, $7,300. Hospice Volunteers of Somerset County, $2,000. Spectrum Generations, $4,600. For a total of $175,735. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, the recommended amount.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Yes, sir.
There's a couple of articles on here that I question. Why does the town of Madison have to give $1,900 to the Snowmobile Club and the Lake Association? Why do we, as a taxpayer, have to pay for the different associations?
You ever answer that question?
The simple answer is that they ask for it.
I was asked for it. You can use the money if I ask.
And they are designated as community groups that are designed for the betterment of our community.
Honorably better our community.
I think someone might comment on that up there.
My name's Mark Kelly. I'm the current president of the Lake West Runts Association. Our main focus is on water quality, protecting the water quality of Lake West Runts. And the major thing that we do with this appropriation is to fund the emergency oak inspection program, which seeks to keep invasive plants from coming into our pond. If we keep those plants out, we will have a whole lot more inexpensive protection of the lake than if we have to try and control the plants once they're in the water. We also focus on monitoring for algae blooms, for lake quality of phosphorus coming into the lake, and we have programs to prevent that from attacking the lake as well.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
The only other reminder I might make is in regards to any funds that go to the Snowmobile Club, those are not generated from your tax dollars. Those are passed through funds. So there's a certain portion, when a person registers their snowmobile, that's set aside that goes to the Snowmobile Club.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, as a reference, please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,275 from property taxation to fund the town-owned property account, recommended by both the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, recommended the amount.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $235,375 from property taxation to fund the capital expenditures account, recommended by both the selectmen and the advisory board. Of that, capital equipment is $55,000. Road surface projects is $176,375. Capital improvements, fire department, $4,000. For a total of $235,375. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, the recommended amount.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 14, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to use $300,000 from undesignedated fund balance to offset taxes, recommended by both the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
I move the amount.
Say it again?
I move the amount, the $300,000.
The recommended amount?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Madison Electric Works Board of Directors to amend the MEW charter to authorize the Electric Works to borrow through the issuance of revenue bonds, recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion?
No.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, sir.
That means the town is out of it as far as voting for revenue bonds? We're no longer relevant in that process?
In the, since the charter was amended a couple of times, the charter has always stated that MEW can come to the town and ask for a town meeting vote to issue a general obligation bond. A general obligation bond is money that's raised and paid back by you, the taxpayers. A revenue bond is different, and that is a bond that is paid back by the ratepayers of Madison Electric. So right now, Madison Electric's charter limits them to borrow 1.2 million. This amendment will remove that limit so they can issue revenue bonds to the amount that they need. And those revenue bonds are not, they don't come back on the taxpayer, they are the responsibility of the ratepayers.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to comment that this is the same thing that the Water District and the Sewer District has had forever. It was almost like a mistake when we set up our charter that we didn't do it at that time, so we're just kind of amending that. But both of those entities have been able to do that forever.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Okay, yes, yes.
Has that been vetted legally, that the ratepayers are the only ones that vetted?
Yes, as a matter of fact, both Madison Electric and the Board of Selectmen got pretty extensive reviews from two different legal sources to review that, and yes, that has been vetted. So it is the case that a revenue bond goes back to the ratepayers. If in the future, MEW wanted to come back to the town to ask for a general obligation bond, perhaps the terms would be better. In that case, then they would go back to town meeting like it has been.
Yes, sir.
So that means that right now, there's a firewall between how much they can borrow and what the ratepayers have to kick back in. And the firewall is this town meeting, and that firewall is going to bite. And the only firewall will be the Board of Directors. Is that right?
What they're essentially doing is removing that limitation of 1.2 million that they can borrow through revenue bonds. And all the other limitations that will be on borrowing are just like everybody else's ability to borrow. You'd have to be able to prove you can pay it back, so that's kind of the limitation.
Tim, I think, but I keep remembering that great line that was going to bring cheap propane to the town. And I don't want to see anything get out of hand like that again. I like the fact that you have to come here and have it out if you want to borrow it.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the article is approved, is moved. Please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 16, to see if the town will vote the date of September 15, 2018, or 30 days after commitment, whichever is later, as the date when the first one-half of taxes assessed for the current year shall become due and payable, and the date of March 15, 2019, when the second one-half of taxes assessed for the current year shall become due and payable, with taxes unpaid after said dates to bear interest at the rate of 8% per annum from said date, recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, the recommended amount.
Okay, and do I have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, sir.
How come every year we have this article before us?
Because the state requires that town meetings set the dates that taxes are due.
But are these the same dates every year?
We try. That March 15th date is pretty consistent, but the September date depends on when the commitment is done by the assessors.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downcard, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes for the year 2018, 2019, not yet due or assessed, recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion?
We can read anything that has happened.
And we have a second. It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 18. To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to enter into a standard agreement with residential taxpayers establishing a quote "tax club", end quote, payment plan for property taxes whereby, one, the taxpayer agrees to pay specified monthly payments to the town based on his or her estimated and actual tax obligation for the current year property taxes; two, the town agrees not to charge interest on timely payments made pursuant to the tax club agreement; three, the town authorizes the collector to accept tax club payments for current taxes which may be due prior to the commitment of those taxes; four, the agreement is automatically terminated if a scheduled payment is late, and the taxpayer then becomes subject to the same due dates and interest dates and rates as other taxpayers who are not participating in a tax club; five, only taxpayers who do not have any outstanding tax obligations for prior tax years are eligible to participate in the tax club program; and six, taxpayers wishing to participate in a tax club for a particular property tax year shall enter into an agreement with the town by a publicly advertised deadline determined by the tax collector. Recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Ready or second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen and the Madison Public Library Board of Trustees to convey all rights, title, and interest in the land in East Madison known as Quote Jacob's Pines Corp. to the Somerset Woods trustees to be conserved in a manner fitting with the intentions of George Jacobs when he willed the property to the town in 1987. Recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion? Ready or second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes, who's Somerset Woods trustees?
Somerset Woods trustees, I'm a trustee, and they are one of the older land trusts in the state of Maine. And their mission is to manage trails for public access, or manage land for public access and other reasons. So their mission matches the mission of George Jacobs' will when he willed the property to the town, as opposed to the library trustees, which their mission doesn't necessarily match the mission of Somerset Woods trustees.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, sir.
Did Jacobs' agreement allow for any harvesting of the property?
It did. I believe it was harvested several years ago.
With the intention that the harvest, any proceeds from the harvesting goes back to the maintenance of the property. You can't harvest it, but you can use the money from the library. So you use the money for, and yet, anything else in town, it was locked. So had you harvested, you understood that harvesting meant you were going to keep that forest alive. And then that money went into a fund, which we have been managing since then. And that money will go to Somerset Woods trustees as part of the agreement.
Any? Article, yes?
I remember when Somerset Woods showed up at the selectmen's meeting and informed us, they were not going to pay taxes on the land that they acquired in town. And I would like to think if they aren't going to pay taxes, at least the revenue off that property should come back to the town. There are a lot of these groups out there like Nation Conservancy and some of those that have huge traction, man, and they pay taxes. They don't all scamper off and not pay their duty. And I would like to think if they are going to pay taxes, they at least should turn the revenue back into the town.
When the town, when the property was willed to the library trustees, that was in the 1980s. And the town of Madison has not received tax revenue from that property since that time. So the agreement would, the same agreement would apply. There would be no change in that agreement in terms of the tax expectations.
I'm using the term "town" loosely. It still was going to benefit a town structure, infrastructure. And this way it will not be due.
In, and I'm not a lawyer, but in trying to interpret Mr. Jacobs' will, it was very clear that any money generated from any work and harvesting on that would not go to the town per se. He was very specific in keeping any of the proceeds separate in that property. It's a very strange and convoluted agreement. The amount in question is approximately $12,000 that is still in that account. And the way that the agreement is written and been approved by the selectmen and the library trustees is they would convey the land and the balance of that account to Somerset Woods trustees.
Julie?
I'm living beside this piece of land. You're not talking about a lot of land. You're talking about a pathway between two homes, maybe the size of a driveway to get up into this land. There's no way it could be used for anything else other than for conservative type or car for the Boy Scouts or what this initially was used for.
What's the acreage? Half acre? Acre, five acres?
Forty-one point two five acres. And sixteen feet wide to get into the property, and then it widens out. It's in the woods. Basically land law.
Article?
How often can you truck the land? Is there any specific time? So if they give the land transfer to them, then who's going to decide when it gets cut again?
The way that it works is that Somerset Woods would develop a management plan that would be consistent with the George Jacobs' will. And in his will, I think part of the mission was to use the land for educational purposes and for public access. And there is a public right of way from the East Madison Road to access the land. And there are already some, there's already some infrastructure for trails that's there because in the past the property had been harvested. So there are walking trails and there are some older logging roads. So there's a nice infrastructure to have recreational trails. And Somerset Woods would review the property, develop a management plan, and then use the account that comes along with that to manage the land for public access. And part of that management plan could potentially be harvesting.
Is there going to be hunting allowed on it?
That would have to be decided by the Somerset Woods management plan. That's a possibility.
What is, what did it say in the will about hunting on it?
I don't think it says anything.
Doug?
I guess I'm working on principle here. I've seen hundreds of millions of acres go under these trusts along the coast where the land is hugely valued, and then it becomes zero value in tax. And you see that creeping into the interior. And yet, way in the interior, there are substantial areas owned by 501(c)(3) groups like Somerset Woods that are paying taxes. And I have a hard time seeing us being nibbled to death by these properties suddenly being taken off the tax hold. Now, why did you wait? It's just no big deal. But you multiply that by tens of thousands of these things moving on every year. And pretty soon people like myself, who are competing with those folks, have to pay taxes. So I have to pay $3 an acre for every acre I own, which takes out of my opportunity to make a go of it. Well, they get a free ride, and I don't believe in that.
Yes, Julie?
I would just like to say that the way that the trust is structured, and we have gone over this, trustees have gone over this. And if nothing changes tonight, that land will never go back on the tax hold. The way that it's set up, it is land set aside for conservation and for enjoyment of the environment. There's no way that the town can sell the land. That's why George Jacobs gave the land to the town and gave management of the land to the trustees of the library that the select board could not say, let's sell the land. The library trustees are not land conservatives. Somerset Woods trustees are a land conservation group. The land will always be the land and not taxed. We're just asking that it be transferred from the library trustees to Somerset Woods trustees.
Doug, I agree that there's nothing you can do about getting stumped from that lot to the gentleman.
Paul, I'm not thinking that way.
I understand you're a principal over there.
I'm not talking about taxes. I'm talking about, there's been a couple of, there's a revenue, and apparently that's going to the library.
No.
Where is it going?
It's staying right with the lot to work on trails and things like that. It never leaves the fund of the gentleman that gifted the 501(c)(3).
It never leads into anything else but that law.
That law. And there's nothing anybody can do. When the town accepted it that way, the town accepted it that way. It goes on in perpetuity, as I understand it. I understand your concern about all of the 501(c)(3). There's also the issue about the gifting of these things to the 501(c)(3) because there's a huge windfall in tax advantages to the people who gift. At the same point in time, there's no taxation. It's something that has to be looked at in every state. It's being looked at right now at the federal government level on the gifting of 501(c)(3). But we're not going to solve it here tonight, I don't think. But you're right in what you're saying. But you're not going to fix what you see as wrong with society on this 501(c)(3).
If you fix this, we're perfect.
I think we could justify all these issues. Are there other questions, comments, or concerns? I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all opposed. It's a vote. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to advertise and sell town-owned and personal property at public sale. Recommended by the selectmen, do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to dispose of tax-acquired property in any manner that the selectmen deemed to be in the best interest of the town. Recommended by the selectmen, do I hear a motion? We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to set all wages and salaries for the coming year except for those already provided for, recommended by the selectmen, do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager, under the direction of the board of selectmen, to apply for grant monies and to expend the monies received for the state of grant purposes, recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. Article 24. To see if the town, in accordance with 36 MRSA Section 506a, will vote to fix the rate of 4% interest to be paid on overpaid or abated taxes, recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion? Ready or second? We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to accept any money or property, real or personal, from any donor, and such money or property shall be utilized as specified by the donor, recommended by the selectmen. Do we hear a motion? We have a second? We have a second?
Second.
Second? Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 26, shall an ordinance entitled "Cemeteries: Town", Chapter 26, be amended? Recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion?
The chairman, yes.
Ready or second? We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Are your cards, downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 27, shall an ordinance entitled "Cemeteries", Chapter 532, be eliminated? Recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 28, shall an ordinance entitled "Site Review", Chapter 484, be amended? Do I hear a motion? Do we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, sir.
What are we voting on here? What is the site review?
The second act.
Did you get a packet that has all of the ordinance changes? Site review is an ordinance that's used by our planning board to review commercial properties that want to expand or build in Madison. Last year, they did an extensive review, and there were a couple of small grammatical errors that weren't caught. Even those small errors need to be made to be approved. So that's all we're bringing it back for.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 29, shall an ordinance entitled "Animals", Chapter 148, be amended? Selectmen, recommend yes. Do we have a second? The article has been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call, ooh. Ooh, where? Oh, yes, okay, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I noticed that the animals. Would these be in that list?
No.
Yes?
What was the reason to extend the barking to an hour? As someone who has had neighbors that have had dogs that like to bark and bark and bark, I'll tell you, listening to them at 10 o'clock at night for a half an hour is too long. And to now extend it to an hour, I had them at our camp, and I had them for the neighbors. Why are we going to an hour?
Let me just clarify, Mr. Park. We're not extending anything. There was no time limit at all in the previous ordinance. In fact, it had no reference to a length of time at all. Now, on the basis of our code enforcement officer's recommendation, he recommended we put in 30 minutes of continuous barking or intermittent barking for at least an hour. So that way, if code enforcement has to respond to a complaint, at least they have some plan to work in.
In the language of?
Oh, I'm sorry, animal control, not code enforcement.
In the language in the ordinance says that?
That's correct. You should have a copy of this packet in the bag.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
What happens if you already have 12 rabbits and 12 chickens? Fifteen chickens, excuse me.
The enforcement of this will be on a complaint basis. So we're not going to come looking for your rabbits and chickens.
You don't like chickens, Mike.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article 30, shall an ordinance entitled "Parks and Recreation Areas", Chapter 667, be amended? Recommended by the selectmen. Yes. Do I hear a motion? Ready or second? We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call.
Just for clarification on this. This change basically adds clarification to the actual names and locations of the parks that are in the ordinances. And what you're approving here in Article 30, you're also approving in 31 and 32 because those other ordinances simply made reference back to this list. So that might clarify any questions you may have on the next two ordinance.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. That's a vote. Article 31, shall an ordinance entitled "Parks, Cemeteries, and Water Access Areas," Chapter 285, be amended? Do I hear a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. That's a vote. And Article 32, shall an ordinance entitled "Sex Offenders," Chapter 308, be amended? Recommended by the selectmen. Yes. Do I hear a motion? Do we have a motion, we have a second? Do we need a second? Do we have a motion and a second? Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. That's a vote. Article 33, shall an ordinance entitled "Prohibition of Marijuana Retail Establishments" be adopted? Recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion? Do we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. That's a vote. Article 34, shall an ordinance entitled "Subdivision of Land," Chapter 490, be amended? Recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion? Do we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands, your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. That's a vote. Article 35, shall an ordinance entitled "Smoking," Chapter 702, be amended? Recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion? Do we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
I'd like to know what kind of amendment we want to see amended to.
So the current town ordinance on smoking was kind of a hodgepodge of just some things. Mainly had to do with smoking around the fire department. I'm not quite sure the history on that. So once the selectmen realized we actually had an ordinance on smoking, we took the opportunity, and again, it's on the last page of the packet. So the language there is about smoking and prohibiting smoking and the use of other products on town property. Town property is defined as your buildings and parks and so forth. It doesn't include roadways, sidewalks, townways, right-of-ways, that sort of thing. So that's not considered to be a place where you can't smoke. But it's basically putting into ordinance form the prohibitions that already existed and cleaning up an old ordinance that didn't really make any sense.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? I thought I saw somebody back there.
That was my question.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. That's a vote. Article 36, shall an ordinance entitled "Excavations," Chapter 189, be amended? Recommended by the selectmen. Do I hear a motion? Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have any questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
At the rest of being a few clever and idle mess, I don't see this, any explanation to this in your handout. Is it, what's, what changed?
My word, Jeff. It's the last article.
I know. I already said it too easy.
This article is being changed to allow for the fees to be set by the selectmen. And we were trying to get away from articles that have the fees set in them. So if the change has to come to town meeting this way, we're just making this chapter consistent with others.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. That's a vote. I'm going to entertain a motion at this point to recess to 8:00 a.m. tomorrow at the municipal office to address Article 2, the election of officers. Do we have a motion? Do we need a second? Do we have a second? All the, any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. That was a vote. So this portion of the meeting is, is it? See you tomorrow.